Thank you. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Selectmen's Report. I won't go in too much detail unless you have questions about legalized cannabis for adults. Got lots of details here. As you know, both the regular and special legislative sessions have ended for the year. Notable legislation that includes but is not limited to the legal sale and cultivation of cannabis for adults over the age of 21. As of July 1st of this year, you can possess up to one and a half ounces on your person and up to five ounces in a locked container in your car or at home. There's a whole bunch of other things that are included in the cannabis legislation, so if you're curious about those things, I can give you the detail. Homegrow will become allowable by July 1st of 2023. Six plants per person, 12 plants per household. And I'll be interested in that because two years ago at a CCM convention, we had representatives from Colorado and Massachusetts come and speak to us about their legalization of cannabis. And it was interesting that the homegrow piece, and I'm looking at Jeremy, we've already spoken, became quite an interesting issue because it wasn't growing your six plants. People converted their basements into homegrow farms, you know, overstepping all sorts of codes and code violations. But the really great thing about the piece of legislation, whether you believe in the legalization of marijuana or not, is there's a tremendous amount of equity component built into the legislation. So in theory, remains to be seen, folks that have been harmed by the war on drugs will be hopefully business and economic beneficiaries of this new law. As you well know, we've talked a lot about changes in the zoning enabling statute 8-2. I won't rehash all of those changes and look forward to the continued dialogue by the Planning and Zoning Commission on the local changes that you would like to move forward. What wasn't in the zoning legislation is a study identifying five state-owned parcels of land for transit-oriented development that the state will undertake. So nobody really knows where those five areas are, but certainly good for us to contemplate that as we contemplate our affordable housing plan. To look at state property where we think development might be able to occur. Another bill, it was called the Anti-Janus Bill here in Connecticut, and it expands union rights largely. Workers' compensation was expanded to dispatchers, corrections officers, and EMS personnel for PTSD, and that will now also include COVID deaths. This is a great one, and my friend from Bethel for Selectmen, Matt Nickerbocker, worked hard on this. The bottle bill finally passed in Connecticut that expands all kinds of bottles that are subject to the 10% deposit, including those little ones, the nips that you see littered all over the sides of the roadway. They're adding a five-cent deposit to those nip bottles that's going to be returned to municipalities for us to use to mitigate the waste from those nips. $46 billion biennial budget was approved. $1.7 billion of federal money was used to balance that budget. The rainy day fund, interestingly, over COVID grew from $2.5 billion to $3 billion. And tax receipts never plunged as they had anticipated in Connecticut. So Connecticut is in a pretty strong financial position right now. The Transportation Climate Initiative did not pass here in Connecticut, but what did pass was a mileage tax on heavy trucks. And good news for us is that municipal aid was held steady. We're actually going to get a marginally increased amount for pilot because they moved to a tiered pilot system, which divides the state into three different tiers of towns based on population, heavily weights the funding going to the urban centers. But Darien's going to get an extra $66,000 or $56,000 from the tiered pilot system, so that's terrific. Governor Lamont today announced a really great initiative called Time for Connecticut. It's a transportation plan that proposes to invest $8 to $10 billion of infrastructure investments in the Metro North Line for track upgrades, new signal system repair and rehabilitate the major movable bridges, as well as undergrade bridges. And I'm wondering if they're going to address the situation on the Post Road. I'll have to ask. It invests in new railcars with modern amenities like Wi-Fi, work tables, and task lighting, and also increases capacity on the rail line. Higher-speed rail will grow the economy, support climate resilience, and enhance access to jobs and educational opportunities. And that will be a huge plus for the town of Darien. And I don't often get really amazing phone calls, but I got an amazing phone call a couple days ago. The mayor, Mayor Marquez from Darien, Illinois, I'll probably get choked up when I say this. I think everyone knows that it's the 20th remembrance of 9/11. So Mayor Marquez, in the spirit of being our sister city, which I also learned, Darien, Illinois is named after Darien, Connecticut, is going to do a memorial and highlight the lives of the six Darien, Connecticut residents that perished on 9/11. They have a big parade on 9/11, and they end up at a local park, and that's where the memorials will reside. I'm hoping I can take a trip out there, but they're going to videotape the entire ceremony, so we'll be able to share that with everybody here in Darien. But in researching Darien, Illinois, they're actually very similar to us, similar in population, smaller geographical area by about half. And they're only 50 years old. And at the time, when they were looking to incorporate in 1969, they couldn't decide on a name. And at the time, the acting mayor, Sam Kelly, suggested the name Darien because he had made a recent visit here. And he thought that our town was very pleasant and attractive. So he suggested that as the name, and it stuck, except they pronounce it Darien instead of our Darien to make it a little bit different. Interesting, I can't believe that he called me today. They were hit by a tornado yesterday that hit that whole area. Naperville was hit pretty hard, but it also hit Darien, Illinois. So on behalf of your sister city, Darien, Connecticut, we extend our wishes for a very speedy recovery. No one in Darien, Illinois was injured or killed in that storm, although some people in other communities were injured. So that's some interesting and fun news.
Just briefly, we're approaching year end and also year beginning, so you'll see over the next couple meetings some transfers coming in to close out fiscal '21. But we're also going to be starting to ramp up with projects, capital projects for fiscal '22.
Okay?
And I have to go to the RTM tonight, so.
Thank you. All right, move along, move along. All right, Selectmen Updates. You'll notice that we changed the header here, Selectmen Updates. So this is the place where you would make a liaison report if you wish to give one. And it's also a place where if you had other comments or questions that you wanted to offer to the board, you could do it here in this agenda item. So any updates from Dragon Youth?
No, I can't.
No.
I can be really quick.
Great.
The Blight Commission met on the 9th. There are six official blight cases in town. We are optimistic because one of those properties has been sold and now has a notice of demolition on it as of June the 8th. When I went by the property today, the electric is stubbed in. So, you know, I'm expecting that construction will begin on that relatively soon. On the second case in blight, the owners have begun to do some work for remediation, but the families currently got some health-related issues when they were subsequently contacted. So there are still a few things remaining, but the family seems responsive, so we're optimistic there as well. There are only two properties that are on warning status. One of those properties has since been foreclosed, and the bank has been notified as to the status. So we're hopeful that something will happen and move that property forward. And the blight officer, we previously had 10 properties on a watch status, but we asked Bob to review all the properties, and he's currently removed eight of those as having no longer requiring active surveillance. So the list is getting shorter, and, you know, things seem to be looking a little better around town.
Excellent. Thank you. David, are two on the watch list now?
No, there are six, sorry, on the watch list? Yes, there are two left on the watch status.
Six active, two watch.
Sorry, six active blight cases, two warning, two watch.
Okay.
Which is the most severe, the warning status?
The blight cases, the actual blight cases. That's where, when they get into that status, that's when the board debates assessing of liens, depending on that unique circumstances for each one.
And how many properties are subject to lien at this time?
Currently, one.
Okay.
There are a couple others that are under discussion.
Okay.
So.
So the one that's being foreclosed on, is there a lien there?
No, no, not from the town, no.
Okay, thank you. There's no public here.
I better say something.
Pardon?
I better say something because of my co-chair and the superintendent's here.
Sitting right here.
Okay, the Building Committee has approved payments totaling just over $11.4 million, of which construction represented about $8.5 million, or roughly 75% of the authorized payments to date. I have this all written out for you.
Okay, awesome.
Through the end of May, the academic wing is 25% complete, and the site work is 43% complete. The academic wing is to be occupied in April of 2022. So with the ending of the school term last week, the plans were very busy scheduled for the next few months, with extensive work performed installing the new power lines, the 18,000-gallon propane tank, and preparing for the new water lines. Hopefully, the existing Forest Main Sewer Line to Mansfield Avenue will check out as usable. Been waiting for that camera for a long time. Finally, graduation ceremonies for Oxford students were held on the Highland Farm Field. I think it was very well received. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anything else for this point in the agenda? Okay, Kate, did we receive any public comment for today?
Nope.
Okay, great. We'll move on to new business, and in deference to our guests, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to move item number three to item number one.
So moved.
David moves. May I have a second?
Second.
All right, Kip, seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Great, thank you. Okay, so we are here tonight to discuss, we're likely to not take action tonight, but it's on the agenda as an action item. But we're going to discuss the request from the Board of Education to establish a building committee or committees for your elementary school renovation project. So thank you for coming, Dr. Adley and Chairman Denine. We will give you the floor. If you'd like to tell us a little bit about the projects, project, projects, please join us at the podium.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. Just kind of, I'll give a high-level overview. So the three schools are Hinley, Holmes, and Royal. This project all started around some library renovations, but also started way back when, when we did the five-year capital plan and also started looking at Ox Ridge. So the goal here is to remove the portables, which have gone beyond their useful life. So that's been the big driver. And then with Ox Ridge coming online, we are able to free up space in some of these other schools by consolidating ELP and DLC. So the Facilities Committee did a great job of looking at those schools and seeing what does that mean in terms of classroom usage and stuff like that. The project expanded to look at what do those schools really need from a renovation standpoint, from new classrooms, resizing classrooms, and really getting those schools up to where they need to be. So the Facilities Team did a great job looking at that in conjunction with Mike Lynch and Dr. Adley in the Cabinet. So Hinley School, the design concept is for a new library, media center, learning commons, a new general music storage, instrumental music room, and two new classrooms on the second floor. And then renovations of the first and second floor to include expanded classrooms, world language, IDEA classrooms, and other spaces for special ed, SRBI, speech and psychology, and staff rooms. Reconfiguration of the DLC classrooms because they are being relocated to Ox Ridge. I will say also that what the Facilities Committee and the Board did also is look overall at all the infrastructure renovations and improvements in the district's capital plan and work to make sure those were included in what we were doing from an overall renovation plan for these schools. So they coincide with what we need to do from an overall capital plan over the next five years. On homeschools, so just to back up real quick, Hinley, there are three portables that we're removing. Holmes, there are two portables. Renovations at Holmes to the Library-Media Center, two new two-story addition with general music storage and instrumental music rooms, world language, two general classrooms. Classrooms are converted to relocate IDEA and OTPT special education spaces. The Library-Media Learning Common will remain in place but renovated, and again, infrastructure renovations based on the capital plan. Royal Elementary School, three portables will be removed. Existing classrooms 8 through 11 to be demolished, new Library-Media Learning Commons addition, new general music storage instrumental music room addition, and four new classrooms. And then at Royal, also the renovation of first and second floor to include expanded classrooms, world language, and other spaces for special ed, speech, psychology offices in the staff workroom, and reconfiguration of ELP. So the district and the administration did a great job of looking where at some of these schools we need to resize classrooms, move offices, and just do some renovating over and above the additions that we're putting on the school. But the goal was to remove the portables, and also Dr. Adley and the Cabinet and the administration have been working on a library reimagine plan that we incorporated into that also. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Dr. Adley?
That's a nice summary. Nice to be here. And I may just take this opportunity both for yourself and also for Mr. Senator, you've done a super job. Y'all know that. So actually, you'll thank us for this.
Sounds like he's looking for volunteers.
We're thrilled with this opportunity. When I came here, this was on the agenda for a wee bit. The Superclass entry plan also identified that in the community that this needed to be done. We need to do it from a number of perspectives. A, the portals are just not, they're not Darien nor Darien's quality of education. It's also a safety issue in many ways, too. And so some of the things that Mr. Denine talks to, some of those were trickle-down effects whenever we pushed in those classrooms into the actual building. What do you have to do then to do that? And our libraries, particularly in two of those elementary schools, are just not up to the standard that we would expect. But the buildings themselves have wonderful character, locations. They don't need to be, it doesn't need to be new buildings. We've had that checked out, so that's good news, and they maintain their character and their presence in various neighborhoods. And so they will serve the kids. My main focus was safety and instructional practices being equitable, right? Do we have the opportunities for our teachers in the classrooms to do what they have to do? And in some cases, that wasn't the case because of the size of some of the classrooms that we modified therefore. So I'm very pleased to say that the instructional practices across the district will be equitable in that capacity.
And I will say too, as you can imagine, at the end of the day, the portables helped us out through COVID in terms of spacing. And Mike Lynch in Facility has done a great job over the years, but they're beyond their useful life and just make no sense anymore. So I will tell you, as long as I've been on the board, it's been a discussion. So I think the ripple effect with getting Ox Ridge up and running was how do the rest of the schools where ELP is, which is consolidating to Ox Ridge, how do they fit into the equation? And it's not just about renovating those existing classrooms, but getting those schools up to speed, doing a library reimagine, and right sizing some classrooms.
Excellent. I think we wanted to get rid of the portables back when Mike was.
I think so. That could be a parade when the portables leave town.
A portable parade.
So I have two questions to start. I'm hoping that you'll tell us that you're building the space. I know you identified them for various specific purposes, but I hope that you're building the space to be flexible space. Can you give us some assurance of that?
I think that was definitely taken into consideration, you know, in adding these spaces. We looked at enrollment. We looked at enrollment out five years and out 10 years. So I think based on the enrollment projections, the administration did a good job of right sizing these schools so we have the right-sized classrooms and amount of classrooms and the right space for what I would consider just incredible curriculum around music and instrument and stuff like that. So, but I think in all these, and especially in Ox Ridge, we did it too, that, you know, these classrooms can move and be flexible space.
Terrific. You know, and I appreciate the diligence that you undertake when you're trying to predict your enrollment. And, you know, all things being considered and doing work with the Planning and Zoning Commission to talk about projects that are on the books, projects that might come on the books. You know, we were hit with some policy changes this year during the legislative session that could have, over time, a significant impact on housing units in our town. So I'm not asking you to, you know, tell me today how you might be addressing that, but, you know, I flag it as something to be cognizant of as you're building out space. I think we said it when we were contemplating Ox Ridge is, I think we have a little bit of a modern, I'll call it a modern mindset here in town to make sure that you build what you need and anticipate what you might need as opposed to, you know, being thrifty today and being sorry tomorrow.
Could I sort of ask that just a slightly different way?
Of course.
In your visualizations that you've put forward for these properties, if one were to say, you know, our projections on enrollment were off by 2%, and we have 2% more kids, is, will there be room amongst the five schools to handle that? Is there a number that we think might be built in there?
Yeah, there's flexibility built in. We also have, Darien has actually a smaller class size, optimal than most districts, so we have built that in. And we tend to, when we go to the state, our two colleagues here would attest that, when we go to the state, they ask us, well, you're building it bigger than it perhaps needs to be. Now, this isn't significantly bigger, right? But it's bigger and it's accommodating a growth factor for the school. So we have built in the new facilities that are going to be built around town, the new developments. That's all taken into account in this capacity. So I feel comfortable that, the Board has always said to me as administration, be conservative in that regard, plan accordingly in that way, and I think we've done that in this project.
Great.
Great, thank you. Questions for Duke and Dr. Adley?
Well, I'd like to, you just came over this afternoon, where the, excuse me, the EdSpecs, the all-important EdSpecs. But I mean, I talked with Duke about this already. I said, you cannot have three different building committees. This would be crazy. I mean, I don't know, it sounds like, these are renovations. And I just think that from economics and from logistical purposes, one architect firm, one chosen contracting firm. I mean, and, you know, you could have a representative from each of the schools on the building committee, just like we have on our committee as well. It's done a great job in communications, but I would really discourage the idea of three building committees. I don't think we're going to find them anyway.
I think in fairness, that is the sentiment, and that has been discussed at the Board table. We came over three because there are three projects. It probably needs to go from three to one. Realistically, trying to get people is very difficult, understandably. I would anticipate that building committee of this one to be a wee bit larger, for people to come in and out depending on which building they're talking about. But that would also provide continuity of design, right, and continuity of concept along the way.
Right.
In addition to perhaps savings of architects and contractors and so on.
That would be a big savings, I think.
Yeah, I think as we go, no, it's a great point, Kip. I think as we go through the process, you know, while a committee, I think, should be bigger and each school should have the representation, I think we have from an example, a great job that Luke Forshaw has done as the principal up there. So the principals will be very much involved, as will the team of people. But I think to Dr. Adley's point, if you think about it, you know, from a design and architecture standpoint, it's pretty much how do you match the existing building in terms of brick, in terms of roof lines, in terms of windows? How do you make it flow? So that type of stuff. So I'm not sure there's a whole lot of architecture involved versus building. Yes, as we all know, the architects do a great job of that, hence the beautiful school that's being built at Ox Ridge. But I think it's simpler, it's not simple, but it's simpler with respect to that.
Well, it's more contained.
Yeah, it's more contained.
You know, the perimeter's already been established.
Right, exactly.
You're not.
And, you know, I think the message from the community, from the public hearing and from all the folks that have participated in this process is, you know, the sooner the better. If all projects can work simultaneously together, I think some of that'll come into play once you go through the architect and choose the contractor and stuff like that. But I think the administration has done a fantastic job, along with Mike Lynch, of looking at what this would look like while school is in session and how we would function. We also do have Ox Ridge coming online, which would give us some flexibility with the amount of classrooms up there based on current ELP enrollment. That gives us some flexibility if needed, so. But I'm in line with your thought process around one building committee.
It's exciting to be able to, in the year of COVID, to actually do this. And in addition to the education that the kids receive, to continue to drive these things. And it's exciting that other kids don't have to wait sort of generations to actually get the facility.
David?
So what I'm hearing you say is, with regards to timing, as soon as possible, and if possible, all three simultaneously.
That may be, you may want to stage it a little bit so that your contractors, your cement guys move from here to the next site to the next site. You know, that'd be really ideal, but.
I think that'll play out, as Kip and I saw through the Ox Ridge process, that'll play out with the architects and with the design folks. And, you know, while, you know, there is some priority with what school would like to do first, I think, once the designs are done and, you know, construction and contractors are decided, I think those are the experts to say, hey, this is going to be a quick win in terms of Holmes, Royal. There's more extensive in-classroom reservations, renovations and sizing. So, you know, it may be structured a little differently, but I think we could at least get all the work done for all three schools through the one building.
So from an administrative perspective, what will help me in my thoughts about the building committee, one or several? And I am inclined to go with the recommended one committee. I think I'm hearing that it will be your objective, or that you're going to recommend to the committee that their objective should be one contractor, one architect, to do the three separate buildings. Is that correct? Am I hearing that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. And then from a project management perspective and filing to the state of Connecticut, do you have to do three separate filings? Can you file it as one building project? Do you know yet?
I would have to check to give you an answer to that, maybe, but I think there are three different buildings, so I would think there'll be three different projects.
Yeah, I think it's going to be three, three separate. I mean, but the idea is it's repetitive in the process.
Yeah, and I think too, with the relationship that we've established with those folks up there, that would be an early conversation to have with them and say, look, this is how we'd like to proceed, but what do you need from us in terms of each individual school from a filing perspective?
Right. And then from, you know, going to the RTM for an appropriation, you know, would you look to get three separate appropriations, break it out by school? Would you go for one appropriation? And, you know, I remember with Ox Ridge, you know, we had to sort of fast-track that appropriation for the state's timing.
Right.
So I would like to know a little bit more about that. I'm assuming that you would like to be in a position to have been before the RTM prior to June of 2022.
Correct.
Right?
In terms of the current timeline for the.
It may well be, like, it's currently the cost of the projects in the range of 56 to 61. I would think you may have for record-keeping of separate projects, may have to go separately just because you want to keep this separate.
I think the state would probably require it to be separate.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so let me just push. And so let me, let me just push the test a little bit, if I, if I may. Each school is unique. What's being proposed for each school is unique. The challenges that are likely to develop for each school will be unique. And we think we can capture enough individual attention on each separate project in one committee as opposed to having them done separately.
Yeah, there, there are similarities to Dave. There's enough similarities between these projects to make that a reasonable approach.
Okay.
And I think, look, it's, it will be, if you think of just early on, some of the meetings that we went through for the one school, four or five hour meetings with architects and construction. So, you know, those meetings will break out potentially for those three individual schools with representation from those schools attending those meetings, but a core group from the building committee attending all of them. So, you know, could be more work for the building committee in terms of time commitment early on as you go through the early phases of it.
I think that was my only concern because the meetings might be slightly painful for those involved. The recommendation was three committees, but I do see the benefit of one committees. But the recommendation from the board, I was three, is that correct?
The recommendation was one or three.
Okay, got it.
The way we, the way we phrased it, just to have that conversation.
Okay.
But from your perspective, from a leadership perspective, I think I'm hearing you say one committee.
Yes.
I see it in Dr. Adley's eyes.
Yes, best, yes.
Other questions for Duke or Dr. Adley?
Duke, I have one, it's just a side question, but you're not actually demoing the library at homes, you're just renovating it?
Yes.
The other two you're demoing, right?
Yeah, the homes is, is it big enough space?
Yeah.
The way it's constructed that we can do something with that.
Are you going to figure it?
As a parent, as genius also, from somebody who's gone through the schools of the portables, we're grateful that they're addressing them. So thank you.
Thank you for all your support from a town perspective. If you think about it, to Dr. Allen's point, if you think about what we've been through over the last 15 to 16 months, and we moved forward with a new school building and we moved forward with doing the right thing around removing these portables and renovating. So it's, it speaks volumes to the community and, you know, their focus on the educational side of what we do every day. Thank you.
Being reminded that the last elementary school building project was done in 1996, right? In 25 years?
Yes, that's right.
Is kind of on the short end of what I thought the useful life would have been for those projects. But I remember how incredibly exciting it was when those projects were complete. So I, I can understand the community's excitement to get these projects underway.
I thought Tocanyk was.
I was going to say Tocanyk, I thought it was in the 2000s.
No, it was, it was Royal and.
All of them renovated in the mid 90s.
All of them renovated in 96.
And then we tore down Tocanyk.
Yep.
In the 2000s.
Yep.
I will tell you, it was an interesting theme during all the interviewing of some of the new principals and assistant principals coming into the district. And all their comments were around how forward thinking we were and moving forward with looking at what our schools need from a building and an infrastructure standpoint. So it was exciting to hear that coming from really incredible pool of candidates we're trying to attract to the, to the town for principals and assistant principals and teachers.
Good. Okay. You know, I don't know if, if we need to take more time to contemplate our thoughts on one building committee or three. I'm open minded to taking an action tonight to authorize the consensus of this board, if you wish.
You are going to need a formal resolution.
Okay.
To be in compliance, I have what we did for the last two projects. But, well, the Ox Ridge, that's what the Ox Ridge looks like.
Is it a hardship if we do this at our next meeting?
Yeah. But you're going to need a formal resolution that meets all the state requirements that authorizes the building committee, authorizes them to do all sorts of wonderful things like hire architects and apply for grants.
And all that stuff.
Yeah, and it has to go through the RTM.
Yeah, I think the last time I was here, maybe there was an amendment made by the, by the selectmen to you along the way.
Okay. So we'll, we'll put it on our agenda for our next meeting to take action.
Thank you.
And we thank you for coming to me.
And as you, as you go through your thought process, I know the ed specs just went out. I'm sure Kip's read them three or four times already. But no. Any questions, please just reach out to us. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks. Okay.
The ultrage, there you go.
Okay, we'll go back to new business item one, discuss and take action to authorize the first electman to sign this steep grant contract.
Right, so the state of Connecticut requires that the first electman be authorized to sign the, the grant. And the next item will be recommending to the RTM that she be authorized to sign the affordable housing plan. Very interesting that for the steep grant, the RTM does not have to vote. They don't have a standard resolution. They said ours was, you know, what we have used in the past is fine. So it's interesting that, you know, two different ways of handling it. I wish the state would be uniform.
Two different departments.
Yes, but in order to actually sign the contract, we need this resolution passed.
So moved.
Thank you, Kip. Madam second, Monica seconds, great. Any further discussion?
Just a question.
Yep.
Is this the final step?
Well, it depends on what you consider final. We have to sign the contract, send it back to them, they sign, send it back to us, and then we can start spending money.
Got it.
But we, we won't be actually spending the grant for another couple of months because we've got to get the landscape architects working on the final plans. And then we'll put it out to bid.
So timing wise, we're looking at a couple of months at least?
Timing wise, we're hoping to plan in September. That's our goal. And, you know, the architect knows that, that, you know, what the timing is that we need because we want the plants to survive.
It's going to be very exciting.
Hey Kate, I have one question. The pollinator pathway, that wasn't a requirement for the grant, was it? I know we're doing it, but it wasn't required.
So there was no requirement, when we applied for the grant, you know, the grant was very open as to what kind of things you could do. We'd gone for the Highland Farms project because of the, the language when they offered the grants this round. I'm trying to remember what it was now that we said, oh, this is, this is the kind of thing they're looking for. I think it was about the historic, you know, property and all that. So we, we included in our application what we intended to do, you know, the site work needed to do the plantings, you know, that we were screening the parking lots in the pollinator pathway was part of what our application is.
Okay. So that is what they approved, so we have to do the pollinator pathway? Because they got, it was supposed on that basis.
But it wasn't the state saying we had to, it was, this was our, this is how we want to spend the money.
Correct. Any other questions? We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, discuss and take action on a resolution authorizing an application for an affordable housing plan grant. So I think you all probably recall that we have already funded in our budget monies for the town's state mandated affordable housing plan. At the time that we asked for that money, knowing that we had to get it done to submit it by next June, this grant opportunity didn't exist. So it came across our desk, you know, a week ago. So we thought, you know, why not? It's available, we might as well apply and see if we can get $15,000. I don't know if $15,000 will be the right amount. Jer, I'm looking at you Jeremy because you're kind of in charge on, on this plan. So thank you.
Good evening, Jeremy Ginsburg, Planning and Zoning Director. We did have in the capital budget $25,000, which is, at the time we put it in the capital budget a year or two ago, we felt that that was the appropriate amount. I've since spoken with the consultant we have in mind for the work. He again confirmed that that's probably the right amount. It's going to be, we expect it to be about a nine month project, starting in October of this year and culminating, as Jamie said, in the required completion by June of 2022. One thing we've of course had to wait for is this past session of the legislature, which basically turned many things upside down in terms of what communities can do, what they can't do. And so certainly that's going to be an essential part of the plan going forward is incorporating those concepts, ideas and requirements. So we are excited to get started. If the grant comes through, fantastic. If it doesn't, we're still going ahead with the project.
Yeah. Sarah?
What about getting this grant? Let's say we received this grant, what does that change about how we approach this? Is there any stipulations? There's nothing tied to this?
Stipulations, at this time, based on the application, the only stipulation is that it be part of the single audit, which is any grant we have to, you know, go through the single audit. It would be one of those things where it's possible when we get the contract that they put some stipulation in there and that we might say, we don't, we don't want to do one. But, you know, where we could turn it down. But at, at this time, to my knowledge, there are no, no conditions upon the grant.
Okay.
Kate, what department is generating this?
Department of Housing.
Housing?
It is housing.
Yeah.
Basically a half million dollars to split amongst various.
First come, first served.
Right.
Various small communities.
Yeah, you had to be under a certain population. They actually listed 103 towns below 50,000 population that are eligible to apply, and it's first come, first served.
I think it's a nod to the fact that it was an unfunded mandate, and they recognize that. They want everybody to be able to do the plan, get it done on a timely basis, so.
Little bit of a carrot maybe.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the submission of an application for a grant for the preparation and adoption of an affordable housing plan. David moves. May I have a second? Sarah seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, thank you. Discuss and take action on a request for the 2021 push and pull parade. We love the push and pull parade.
We do love the push and pull parade.
I think that we, let's see if I can find the right pages. It is a different parade route. So that's, that's the notable thing. And, and as always, anything, any approval that we give is contingent on the approval. In this case, it would be by the public schools and by the Darien Police Department. So is there any discussion about approving the push and pull parade for July 4th, 2021?
I just have one question.
Yes.
What time does it start? Good question, I don't know that. Usually the step off is around 10:00.
10:00 AM is the usual time. Yep.
And then do they have to, do the food vendors have to leave at a certain time? I think they have to see if they can get a permit now. It looks like they're good to go.
Okay. I love it, I think it's fun, assuming the school approves and the police approve.
I, yeah, I assume.
Yep.
I love the route, actually, it's nice and shaded and I think in a hot day, people appreciate it.
Well, and you skip the post road, which is huge.
Huge. Inexpensive.
Yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this year's 2021 push and pull parade. Monica moves, may I have a second? Sarah seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. And we'll find out exactly what time it steps off. Okay. Transfer request to transfer $5,447 to emergency management program expenses related to COVID. Kate, is there anything else you'd like to add to the description here from Mark?
No.
Any questions from the board on these expenses?
Kate, I have a question. It says that they've applied for reimbursements, but they haven't received them, is that right?
We've applied for COVID reimbursement from FEMA, from the CARES Act. To my knowledge, this is correct, that we have not received the reimbursement. I have to tell you that the rules kept changing during the years to, you know, what was eligible, what was not. But if we, if we receive any funds at this point, if it's past June 30th, it goes into the next year and as a, you know, unanticipated grant. So we need to do it now to cover us for the current fiscal year.
Right, okay. So there's no reason to wait on this for the ARK money either, right?
No. Okay. Other questions? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve a transfer of $5,447 from Board of Finance Contingency Operating to program expenses in the Emergency Management Department.
So moved.
Kip moves, may I have a second? Sarah seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed extension? No, okay, motion carries, thank you. Okay. We have an appointment, exciting appointment tonight. The appointment of a chief building official for a four year term beginning July 1st, 2021 and expiring on June 30th, 2025. And I will entertain a motion to appoint Mike Viti for this four year term to be our new head building official. Monica moves, may I have a second? David seconds. Any further discussion about Mike's appointment? I think we're really lucky to have him. I think he's going to be terrific.
Absolutely.
We've had a long history of great building, head building officials, and Mike will be great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Great. Okay. We have meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes of June 7th. Any corrections?
Was there no selectmen report?
There was a selectmen report.
Yes, there is.
I think I sent it to you.
Yes, you did. And I think that.
Just add it in.
Yeah, I'll add it in. I think we got mixed up in our versions and what we sent out to you.
Just one correction.
Okay.
Kate, I have two corrections. Instead of Bob Duff, Bob Duff?
I'm sorry.
Under board liaison reports?
Board liaison reports.
It's under Mr. Coons, under, it's under the.
Oh, Bob Duff.
And then eight point, I know. I know, sorry.
He might appreciate that.